All right. Thank you. While it's at the bottom of the screen of this particular slide, it does not mean that it's of less importance. We need to ensure that we're providing social emotional learning and support to all our students. It is more critical now than than it has been in my 26 years as an educator. We are required by the California Department of Education to provide a hybrid model. With that, we need to ensure that we have equal access, excuse me, equitable access to the curriculum and learning for our students who are at school and those who may not be able to attend school. We need to have a hybrid model that provides the most effective academic opportunities for every student, while allowing social interaction to the extent that we can. Of course, we need to have a very safe environment. We're also operating under some constraints in that we have to limit our class size attendance to about 12 students. As a district, we need to ensure that we are able to teach all students, those who can be on campus, those who cannot. We also need to have the school open. We understand that. We provide a service to parents, guardians, caregivers, so that you can go back to work. I know this personally. My sister has five kids. She has to work. She needs schools open. We also, we also need to be prepared to return to full distance learning. As we've seen in our state in just the last week, I am concerned that we may be in a position in the not-so-distant future where we have to go back to full-distance learning, and we need to be prepared to do that. And of course, we need to be able to provide lunches, breakfasts for for our students. So that gives you an overall sense of everything that we take into account when developing a schedule for our students. So now we're going to begin looking into each of the schedules, and as I mentioned, at the end of each schedule, we'll give you an opportunity to make a comment or ask a question, and you do that by please raising your virtual hand, and Mr. Steinbach will call on you. And we ask that you limit your comments or questions to no more than three minutes so that we can give as many people an opportunity to participate this evening. So looking at what we are referring to as option one, and this was presented to the school board the first week of June. And what we're looking at here with this particular schedule is that students would be on campus one day a week. On Mondays, students would participate asynchronous, which essentially means that they are learning at home on their own, either by watching a video that was created by their teacher or doing readings, studying, doing an assignment. That's independent work that's been provided to them by their teacher. On Tuesdays and Wednesdays, students would be in their class virtually. So they would be on the computer or on their device as we are this evening, and they would be watching live instruction, participating with the teacher, participating with their fellow classmates. On Thursday, we would have students on campus whose last names A through L. So they would be on campus on Thursday. The rest of the students would be doing one of two things. They would be doing asynchronous, so doing independent work that's provided to them by their teacher, or they would be streaming in to the class as it is being conducted with half of their fellow classmates physically there, and and they are at home using a device to participate. And then on Friday, we flip, and the students who were not at school on Thursday would would be there on Friday. And so this is our option one. So at this time, I'd like to open it up to any comments or questions specifically to option one. I'm not seeing any hands raised at this time, but I'll give it a couple of minutes here. For clarification, okay, I do have a hand raise. Katrina Redderberg, please unmute yourself.
Can you hear me?
Yes. Yes.
I'm having a hard time hearing you. So my question is actually pertaining to all of the schedules. Is it the thought process that the students that are engaged in online learning would actually follow a daily schedule as if they were at school, meaning they would go Zoom classes, period one, period two, like five or six Zoom sessions, 30 minutes to 60 minutes long in one day?
So looking at, we'll use this option one to to answer your question. So on Monday, students would not be held to a particular schedule. They would just have assignments, work that they would have to do. Looking at Tuesday, which is our B schedule, students would have periods one, two, four, and six, and they would follow that schedule.
Okay, so we're still having expectancy of four, up to four hours of on-screen time in one day? Possibly.
Yes.
Okay, and and I, so I do just want to comment that that, given the way that it went last, the end of last year, and and just my own experience of having to shift all of my own pediatric clients to telehealth, four to six Zoom sessions a day, 30 to 60 minutes is very overwhelming, physically to the brain and the eyes. So I just like us to keep that in mind as we're talking about this. So thank you and welcome, Mr. Garcia.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Ms. Pinatelli was next.
Hi, I just had two comments about option one. First is I have a couple coworkers that are are part-time. I am a teacher at the high school, and they are 60%. And if we have these in-person D-Day schedules, that makes it challenging for them being part-time because they actually have to come to campus more frequently than they would otherwise. So I just wanted to comment that for them, they weren't able to get into the meeting. And then the other thing that I wanted to comment on is is as a teacher, the last experience was new for us as well, and I think moving into the fall, our approach to distance learning, I think, will be much improved with a lot of the experiences that we had in the spring. Thank you.
Thanks, Natasha. Next is Siobhan. I'm sorry, probably mispronounced that.
That's all right. It's Siobhan. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. My question was about the asynchronous or synchronous on Thursday and Friday. Does that mean the teachers have the option to either provide it synchronous or asynchronous, or how is that determined?
Yes, it will be an option, and it'll be dependent on what they need to cover on that particular day and what is most advantageous for the students.
So that the, like on any given week, the teacher would say, we are going to meet tomorrow, or we're not going to meet tomorrow, or so it would just vary from week to week?
It has that potential, yes.
Okay, thank you.
And Amy?
Hi, thank you. I just want to follow up the question for the, from the last person. If I had a question, but just to ask for clarification. In-person asynchronous would mean that they potentially don't come to campus if the instructor doesn't think they need to be seen that day?
Um, no. So in-person on Thursday, students whose last name A through L, they will be on campus.
So what does the asynchronous mean?
So, so we still are providing instruction to the students who are not on campus. So the remaining students M through Z on that particular Thursday, they are either going to be doing work that's been provided to them by their teacher asynchronously, or they will be live streaming in to that particular class on that day.
Okay, got it. So my question is, for the two in-person days, are the students staying in one classroom all day, or are they moving from classroom to classroom as they would typically?
Yes, they, so they will not be staying in one classroom. They will be moving from one class to another.
And they will be moving to the classroom with their, the actual instructor for their class, the actual teacher for their class?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
And Shannon?
Hi, good evening. I have two questions, or one concern anyway, and looking at option one, it looks like we're starting the week off either asynchronously or synchronously, and then ending the week in person. And I wonder about self-starters. I wonder about motivation, possibly considering having the in-person days Monday and Tuesday to set up the students for the week, set up their success, and then being able to perhaps have more resources for the rest of the week. So that was just one point to ponder. And my other question, I'm curious, currently, or at least in the spring or in the past, the high school has had A-V days, and I'm wondering if that splitting the one through four, five through seven is going to be a part of this particular schedule, or if you would be considering just running through periods one through seven daily?
Mr. Steinbach, you want to?
Yeah, I think that one of the things that we were trying to do going into this was keep it our bell schedule as consistent as possible in a, you know, a traditional way. You point out that the D-days and A-days, the D-day is a one-through-seven period. Each period is 48 minutes long. And A-day is a two-through-seven. We don't have a first period because that's our professional development, PLC time for teachers in the morning. The B and C day, a B-day would be a first period, and then even days, so two, four, six. And each one of those classes is 101 minutes long, and a C-day is a first period in the three, five, seven, 101-minute-long class periods. It works well at the high school for particularly with CTE classes where they're doing labs. If there's a unit test, that type of thing, they work well. You know, as being a, I was only a teacher three years ago, I would constantly talk to my students, and they actually preferred days where they only had four classes in one day, had long extended periods of time with the teacher.
Thank you.
And Todd and Kathy?
Hi, everyone. Just a couple of things with the option one. One, it is harder for the lab classes because we only have 48 minutes than the CTE classes. Makes it more of a challenge. And then just the challenge of having six or five classes in your classroom and cleaning your classroom and doing all those things in a shorter period of time.
And Phoebe?
Hi, sorry about that. It's actually Jennifer Zeiger, baby's mom. Phoebe's here too, though. So my question is, on the Thursday, Friday in-person class time, since there's going to be 12 kids per class rotating amongst what sounds like seven different classrooms in that day, what health assurances do you have regarding cleaning between active transitions?
So related to cleaning protocols, on our district website, we do have a document lists the steps that we will be taking regarding cleaning. So those are going to be in place. Once we have settled on a schedule, we will be producing a document that will go into detail as to the steps that we will be taking as it pertains to that particular schedule. And we'll get that out to parents ahead of school starting.
Thank you.
And Olga?
Hi, thank you for taking my call. Can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
Okay. I appreciate everything you guys are doing. I know this is a difficult situation. It was chunky at the end of the year, last year. We got through it, and thank you for that. Overall, in all the options that I'm looking at, I I am really drawn to the ALMZ aspect of it. That means that the students are only interacting, in a way, in person with a certain set of students, and and I understand it's difficult. But I would ask for a little more innovation in that and to to mix the students up a little bit just because of the social aspect that has been lacking since March. It's so important. And I'm very pro to the synchronous, anything to improve the interaction on a daily basis. And it would just help the structure, I think, in my home and maybe many parents' home. So that's the only comment I have for now. Thank you.
Thank you. And Sarah?
It won't let me unmute. I apologize. It won't let me unmute. This is Craig Chavez. My wife Sarah has this question as well. So when students are moving from classroom to classroom, are those cohorts staying consistent when they move from classroom to classroom, or are they mixing again with a new group of students?
They will be, they will be potentially mixing with other students, yes.
And that is just in this option one, is that correct? Or is that for all options?
That will be for all options, where students are present on campus.
And then, um, I apologize. So the the other part is, is if they're in face-to-face, I'm sorry, in in classrooms, I know the middle school has talked about actually having students come in, and they're online, but in a classroom setting. Will that be the case here, that they're online, not necessarily in front of a teacher as a part of the components of the instruction, or will they be in front of the teacher that they're working with?
They will be with the appropriate teacher. So your math class is with your math teacher, your history class, your culinary class. You're you're with the credential teacher who's providing that instruction.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, we have two more. Carrie? Okay, we're going to limit to those two so we can move on to the next schedule.
Hi, Carrie Surpa. Thank you for working on the schedule. As a teacher and a parent, I appreciate all the time and energy that has gone into the plans. My comment and question is similar to some of the others that have already been stated. Given the CDC Guiding Principles for Safety of Getting Kids Back to School, low risk is described as virtual learning. More risk is described as small groups spaced apart, staggered, and rotating schedules. Highest risk is described as students that mix between classes and activities. CDC also suggests that schools consider implementing several strategies for cleaning and disinfecting classrooms. And I know I've seen Mr. Kelly's plan. It's great, but as well as, quote, identifying small groups of students and keeping them together and limiting the mixing between those groups when possible by staggering schedules, staggering arrivals, locations for drop-ups, etc., etc., excuse me. So I'm wondering how the current schedule options allow for this when you have only five minutes between passing periods?
You bring up some very important, very important information, and at this time with the five minutes, we are going to need to look at, especially when you have a D-schedule, as was noted earlier, you know, multiple periods. So it is something that's going to have to be addressed. I agree. And last one for the schedule. Lasses Walt?
Yeah, sorry, I came late to the party. One question, and then I'll get to my other question depending on the answer. My understanding from what I've read up to this point is the the primary plan is to do flipped classroom. Is that true?
Um, I'm going to say no. In that, looking at this scheduled Tuesday synchronous, you are live with your instructor. So as we're conducting this meeting now, that's how it would be for the students on an asynchronous day, Monday. Yes, that would be the flipped classroom model.
Okay, so so then with that, to the comment earlier about having the in-person days later in the week, I I'm in support of the later in the week just because with the flipped starting off on Monday, that's when they're learning the stuff without direct delivery. And so they're working through it. When they're in person, they have the opportunity with the teachers to spend the time. They're working through the things that they're having challenges with. I mean, that's the whole concept of that flipped classroom.
Thank you.
Thank you, Walt. Before we move on, I might add that one reason why we have the asynchronous day on the Monday on every one of these models is because we're attempting to match up with the other sites, for one. But two, if a student, let's say on Friday, couldn't come to school for whatever reason, Monday would be a day where students could actually come into class and actually see their teacher and be in class with their teacher to retake a test, that that kind of thing.
So it does provide us some flexibility on Mondays. All right. Red Gold 1.0. And this schedule was brought to the school board in the middle of June. And with this schedule, we look at it as a two-week block of time. With the first week, which we're referring to as Red Week, this would be strictly online with the students doing asynchronous work, so working independently at home with curriculum and learning opportunities provided by their teacher. And then Tuesday through Friday, they are live online with their teacher going through each of their schedules. Then on the second week, which we're referring to as the Gold Week, again, we begin the week Monday with asynchronous work, working independently. And then students are given the opportunity to be on campus two times a week. So Tuesday, students A through L will be on campus. The students who are not on campus will be doing either independent work or streaming in with their teacher and their classmates. And then Wednesday, we bring the students M through Z on campus. Thursday, M through Z, and Friday, A through L. So Gold Week provides two days for students to be on campus. Okay, we have Shannon?
Hi, thank you again. I am curious about this particular schedule. I'm wondering the purpose for the full remote learning week and then coming to school for a week. I'm wondering if you have actually entertained a duplicate of the Gold Band. Again, I would advocate for starting the week on Monday and having PLC meetings, teacher remote day Friday, but this would allow the students to be on campus, learning, what, eight times? 16 times a month versus, you know, I think this would end up being four. And I I guess I'm not understanding the Red Week, the purpose of the Red Week. It feels, again, like it would allow students to kind of falter and lose motivation, lose their momentum, and having that many days in a row of synchronous learning, again, is just, I think, way too much for students to have to be in front of the computer, being on all day long, four days a week. So those are my my comments. I guess I'm curious about the purpose of the Red Band, and if you would be interested in considering just having the Gold Band, having the students be on campus more frequently.
So later, we will actually be presenting a Gold Week-only option. That'll be the last one that we present this evening regarding the Red Week, and it goes back to some of the points that were made at the start of the meeting in that we need to be prepared for the possibility that we may have to switch to a completely distance-learning model. And this gives us and the students an opportunity to be accustomed to that and for us to be able to, if you will, flip that switch almost immediately. So that was the intent behind this. The intent also behind this is to kind of separate the online learning with 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 the physical presence learning as well, and not jump back and forth. So those are some of the ideas behind it. And I don't know, Mr. Steinbach, if you also have anything else to add to that. I think that's great. Thanks, Leo.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is Jill.
Hi, I have, I heard your comment earlier about trying to align with the middle school and the two elementary schools. And so I'm really curious as to why we have a model presented for the Gold Week, whichever option that ends up being, that the high school students are going to school Tuesday and Friday, and then Wednesday, Thursday, when that's not the model that's being followed by the elementary schools.
Yeah, initially, the thought behind that was that students who were given a test, it may be an inequity issue because the students would be taking their tests earlier, the A-through-L group I'm referring to here, as opposed to the M-through-Z group. And it was discussed that this would be a bit more equitable. Let's say if a kid was given, you know, study time on Friday for a test, if we were doing it where M-through-Z was on Thursday and Friday, those kids would have, you know, X amount more days than the A-through-L group. It's certainly something we're still discussing. So, you know, obviously, none of this is set in stone.
Absolutely. And if the if the equity issue, in my opinion, I think we have to kind of pick who's in charge. So if the equity issue exists at the high school, then it would obviously exist at the elementary school and at the middle school as well. So if this is the most equitable schedule, then to have everybody follow suit with the high school, that would seem seem logical, but to have everyone in the district doing the same schedule, because if you have an older student and a younger student, you know, not only are you looking at childcare for younger students and all that sort of stuff, but you're also looking at scheduling for families.
Absolutely.
Next up is Aparna?
Yes, thank you. Thank you so much for your careful consideration of these various schedules. I really appreciate it. As a faculty member myself, I really know we're going through a lot, trying to figure out what to do with our students as well. I also agree with Shannon. I'm I'm curious, I'm happy that you have this new option coming up with all gold because I think that even Because I think that even if we are anticipating that potentially we're gonna go, might have to shut back down altogether. For the beginning, while we're not shut down, it would be wonderful for the students to be together. My son, who's a first incoming freshman, has asked me, you know, when am I going to be able to be with my other cohort, my friends, and see them and be with them and talk to them, you know, in person together, not just online. And I think this is really important, especially for our teenagers with the onset of depression, et cetera, that comes up during this age group. The other thing that I wanted to mention was just that I was thinking about these cohorts in terms of perhaps we can put them, and I know this isn't the optimal way of thinking, but if we can put them in their cohort, so for example, if they're all in the same courses together, can we put them all together rather than A through L, but put them in those kids that are all in similar courses? So then the teachers might be able to rotate into a classroom. Now, I know that's not optimal in terms of thinking of, you know, the culinary courses and things like that. But when we're talking about math and science and, you know, maybe AP Human Geography, et cetera, if those cohorts are together, that might also minimize the, you know, interactions between students and have them stay within their same cohort. And the final comment that I wanted to make is that I'm really hoping that we can also still do some sports. Now, the way that I was, a colleague of mine was thinking about this was if they can just practice, right? They don't have, no interactions with any other students outside of PG, but just practice so that the kids that are interested in doing football can get those skill sets going. And while I know what we have to do also is really push forward for people to be following the guidelines. All of our parents have to be following these guidelines in order for us to be doing this, right? We have to wear our masks, minimize our social contact so that we can all trust that when our kids are interacting with each other, that they have minimal contacts between them. So there, those are just a couple of things that I wanted to mention. And again, I really appreciate the work that you're doing. Thank you so much for having this town hall.
Leo, I think I can take the cohort one a little bit here. Sure. We really tried, in fact, that was our first thought, was to attempt to get students together and play with the master schedule and see what we could do and cohorting kids and keeping them together. And what it came down to is essentially, we would have had to get rid of AP classes, honors classes, and probably eliminate CT classes at least in person and make them completely online. To us, that was somewhat of a non-starter. We just have so many what's called singleton classes, where it's one class that's being run on third period with one teacher, for example. We have several of those. So I was working with Mr. Bell and the counselors and trying to figure that out and trying to move the pieces and see if that could work. We even considered just saying, starting over with the master schedule. Again, nothing set in stone, but I just wanted you to know that we certainly looked into that.
Thank you so much.
Okay, next up is Ms. Pinatelli.
All right, thank you, Shane. I just wanted to say that I really like this schedule for the period of time in between the in-person days that allows us to, I guess, kind of curb potential infection, so those can be identified before students come back on campus. And I also wanted to talk about what an online synchronous day might look like. It could be that as, I'm the chemistry teacher, I post a video that teaches my students a concept. And maybe it's five minutes and they watch the video and then they answer a couple of questions about it or they think about it. And then we have scheduled group sessions where now I'm talking to each student in a group of maybe five students. And so we can have a more in-depth conversation and then there's more of a social aspect to it. So I'm feeling very optimistic about the opportunities we have and the the differences that we can make this time around with the distance learning and being synchronous and making it so it's not such a a challenge for our students and for ourselves. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Natasha.
Before we go on to the next person, Shane, in looking at the time, what I'd like to do is get through the next two schedules and then we'll give people an opportunity to talk about red gold one, red gold two, and gold week only. Okay, so those of you who are waiting, if you can just please hold on, I'd appreciate it. Thank you. So red gold 2.0. This was created after we presented 1.0 to the school board. And the biggest difference, if you will, between 1.0 and 2.0 is that on the red week, we now have one day for students to be on campus. So again, the biggest difference between 1.0 and 2.0 is that 2.0 provides one day a week for students to be on campus. Gold week stays the same. Red week changes a little bit. Okay? And then our final schedule is gold week only. So again, Monday, as is with all our schedules, as well as the schedules at the elementary and middle school, is an online day for students. And then we have students on campus two times a week. If you're A through L, you're there Tuesday and Friday. If you're M through Z, you're on campus Wednesday through Thursday. If you're not on campus on a particular day, you are learning at home, either through independent work that's provided by the teacher or you're live streaming into the class. So again, that was just a quick breakdown of the last two schedules. So before we wrap up tonight, we'll open it up to anyone who has a comment or question about 1.0, 2.0, or gold week.
And Jen Erickson?
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, fantastic. So, um, this is going back to 1.0. And also some of the comments about Mondays, I just wanted to bring up, I know another issue that we've had with Mondays in the past, as far as making those really robust learning days, is that that's where the holidays tend to fall. At least one a month. And anytime we have one of those three or four-day weekends, it throws all the other complicated schedules out of whack. So my concern with moving our in-person days to Mondays would be the number of them we'd lose. The second thing I wanted to bring up about red week as a teacher, for those of you who don't know me, I teach the culinary program. It's a full four-year program. With red week, the way I see it as a teacher is it gives us an opportunity to do more project-based learning to really make what we're teaching our students relevant. And I know that's easy for me to say with cooking because they're at home and it's food. But I've spoken with a lot of my colleagues and there's definitely a way to do more of the project-based learning. The way that I found that I made this very successful in the spring was that it didn't look like my students just coming and watching videos every single day. It looked very different. What it looked like was Monday, doing an online check-in that took them about 10 minutes. They were able to read over their project-based assignment. They were able to answer questions and I will, it was a launch. It was a very quick launch. I was able to make sure everyone's on board. From there, they had until Sunday to complete their project. And so that way, it allowed them to manage their time around other classes. And yeah, I feel like it allowed them to not only manage around their classes, but around their life, around any interests they were able to foster during that crazy time. And so that's, that's one of the things that I really liked about it. It seems to offer a lot of flexibility for the students and for teachers to make a much richer learning experience. The last thing I just wanted to piggyback on what Natasha was saying about as a teacher, and as a parent, I have four children currently in the district. It seems like that week off does allow for safety, for sanitizing, for some one of the incubation periods. With the numbers, the COVID-19 numbers right now that I've been watching every day, they do tend to be rising in Monterey County. And it looks like currently 10% of those infected do fall between the ages zero and 17. And that if we do continue to see a rise, it does seem inevitable that we might have to shut down. And if we are able, if teachers are given an opportunity to really create an engaging and robust distance learning for those red weeks, we'll have a model so that if we do have to go on total shutdown, the students will know what to do. We'll have a model where we could say, yes, we can do this. So I think that's all.
Thank you. Thanks, Jen. And Walt?
Yeah, two things, just one suggestion of an alternative on the red gold one. The possibility of doing one red week and then three gold weeks. And then secondly, regarding an earlier comment on lining up with the other schools in the district, I would advocate not lining up with them primarily for the purpose of equity with bandwidth. For those who have children in different levels of school, to have all the kids trying to do online learning at the same time, if you don't have a robust bandwidth, that can become incredibly problematic.
Thank you, Walt. And Larry?
Hi, this is Larry Hagquist. I'm a teacher at the high school. And I'm also a parent of a incoming high school student and a middle schooler. My wife's also a teacher. I also just finished in the last week 15 hours of distance learning training that was put on by the district. And a couple of observations, I wanted to respond to Carrie Serpa's comment about option one. When she kind of broke down the low-risk, medium-risk, high-risk and the five-minute passing period on option one. With the short periods available on option one, it just, that to me seems like it's where we have high risk and really no time to clean the classrooms. We've got one of the seven periods a day. There's just a lot of mixing going on. It seems to me like in terms of just safety, if that's one of our goals, it seems like we're trying to mitigate exposure to risk by putting together these schedules. Clearly, the red gold 1.0 seems the safest. They're not on campus during the red week. So that would be a reason in response to Shannon Lukin's comment about like, why is there a red week? I think that it might, I think the risk would definitely be lower in terms of getting the virus. That would be a reason. And also, it looks to me like that option would give us an opportunity to practice some of the skills that we've been developing in the distance learning trainings. Because you really have an opportunity to practice it where you're not having to teach an in-person class while you're kind of in parentheses, doing the asynchronous or synchronous instruction, you're actually doing the distance learning instruction, which I agree with Natasha, would be much improved from last spring because we really didn't have any time to prepare for that. And so to, I guess, the one, the two things that I wanted to to highlight would be the lower exposure to risk when we are in person for a B, C day rather than like an A or D day. And then secondly, the opportunity to practice distance learning in the case that we actually have to go to a full distance learning model, I think that we need some practice in that. That's all I have to say. And thank you all for your work.
Thanks, sir. And Harrison? Harrison? Harrison, we cannot hear you right now. Give it a couple more seconds. Okay, come back if you can. And Aparna?
Hi, first of all, I wanted to say that I really liked Walt's idea of one red and three gold days. Thank you for bringing that up. I think that was wonderful. And Larry, I'm so happy that you did that distance learning, the distance training. We've been working on that as well. And I would love to get together with faculty from all over. I'm a college faculty member. But I would love to hear what everyone else is learning on different levels. So if we could try to get together, that's another thing. I wanted to mention that Colorado College has these blocks, this block learning schedule where they basically teach three courses, right? And it's one course for, you know, four weeks, another course for four weeks, a third course for four weeks. So it's an intensive learning experience for the students, but they're only interacting with their cohort and that faculty member. And that is a really interesting, I've really been interested in that because I've been teaching a course every summer, a genetics course that's three weeks long, intensive in a block. And what I've been doing is trying to understand how the students are retaining their information when they learn in a block learning system versus learning courses all together. And I'm seeing from the data that it looks like they're retaining the information in the same way. So we're working on writing a paper about this. So I just wanted to throw that out there because that might be a really good way for us to minimize interaction and then also keep the cohorts together if we did something like that. So again, thank you so much.
Thanks, Aparna.
So we are coming up to the six o'clock hour. I'm willing to extend the meeting until 6:30, for those of you who would like to stick around. Shane, is it possible, and I don't know if you can do this by viewing who has their hands raised, but after the next person who you're gonna call, could you maybe see if you could select a few students? If possible?
Absolutely. Absolutely. Let's go to Mrs. Zeiberg first.
Hi, this is Phoebe Zeiberg. I am a student, so choose the right person. So I don't really understand this idea of practicing for distance learning. We did that throughout the spring. I want to get the most days that I can right now, rather than practicing for futures that may or may not be, may or may not happen. I don't want to practice if it's just gonna happen. It's, we should just get the days while we can and not. Yeah, I don't know. I can't phrase that in a different way. But also, in my experience in the spring, I did not, I did not feel as though it was project-based. I felt as though teachers would hand us a textbook. We would read it, we would answer questions, and that was it. I remember almost nothing from what we did in that spring. And I feel so, it would be extremely frustrating to do that again.
Can I add on something? Sorry, here's the mom side of things. I, you know, I think that you guys have an unenviable task here. This is so colossally difficult. And I really appreciate all the time and effort you all putting into this. I know safety issues for everybody involved, as well as educational issues that are so critical. And I view all of you as really essential personnel. And so I appreciate all the effort you're putting in. I do appreciate the considerable effort and work that would go into starting over with the master schedule. But truly for the long term, and you do need to realize that this is not going away anytime soon, establishing a task force that could possibly look at redoing a master schedule, such as what Aparna pointed out, two cohorts, because that really is going to be critical at keeping numbers low for the long haul. Flattening the curve does not mean that there are zero cases. It means that there are fewer cases for longer periods of time. The methodologies of all of these have their own inherent risks, such as having A through L on Tuesday, and then M through Z, and then M through Z, and then returning A through L. You definitely probably want to have A through L, then A through L. L, you definitely probably want to have A through L, then A through L a day off, and then M through Z, M through Z. There's a variety of different issues with all of the plans, but really, you know, taking the time to consider the long distance run here, and that we're really looking at a five-year circumstance. So I don't know if anybody's thought about it like that, but really considering an overhaul of the master schedule, I think would be an important thing to do this summer. Thank you, sorry.
Thank you. Let's go to Claire Rogeman.
Hi there, my name's Claire Rogeman, I'm an incoming senior, and I was just wondering how the social emotional aspect of school is addressed in the red gold weeks, both versions, one and two. It seems that just a gold week would give the most attention to the social emotional aspect of school, which I feel greatly improves my retention of knowledge, which is, yeah.
Counselors tend to agree with you. Thanks Claire. Let's go to...
Um, I'm sorry, I asked how it was addressed in the red and gold week, could you answer my question, please?
Oh, I'm sorry, Claire. Yeah, the way in which counselors agree with you is that on block days, Claire, typically those are the days the counselors are pulling kids out of class, it's easier for teachers to make time for kids to be pulled out of class, to give you an example on that. With the sanitization and that, those types of things coming, having to be discussed, I'm sure there's going to be time at the tail end of block periods and at the beginning of block periods where kids can actually go in and see counselors, particularly Mrs. Catigan or Outreese Counselor, that type of thing. So we've been thinking about it.
Okay, thank you so much.
And also to that, we want to ensure that when we have days where students are not on campus online, that we are providing opportunities also to check in with students and ensure that they are doing well socially emotionally. So in a red week, it wouldn't be that we would not have those opportunities, we would create those opportunities online as well.
Good point. Let's go to Tiana.
Hi, thank you. First, I want to agree with what Phoebe was saying. As a student, I do think that until we potentially would have to close and go all online, I think that we should be in person as much as we can, just to like be with the teacher and be with other students. And then I had a question about sports or just a comment, I was hoping that for certain sports, or for all the sports really, that we could be able to at least practice, as was mentioned earlier, and still have sports just to give us some other activities and exercise after school.
And this is Von, Tiana's mom, I just had one request for you, I guess, is if we go with the gold in whatever form it is, red and gold or just gold, can you please give some consideration to the groups being Tuesday, Thursday, Wednesday, Friday, rather than this different split thing? And if not, if you've already considered it, can I know why this is better? Thank you.
Yeah, I addressed that a little earlier, and I'll try to articulate it again. Basically, the reason why we're doing that is because if a test was given, let's say on Friday, you study over the weekend, that type of thing. The M through Z group, if they were in class Thursday and Friday, for example, would have X amount more days to study for their test as opposed to the A through L group, so it was viewed as an inequity issue. But again, nothing set in stone, we're still discussing the cohorts, for example.
Thank you, I did hear that, and I'm sorry, I should have said further that right now, if I'm understanding correctly, they already had a little disparity, you know, some kids had a test on Tuesday, some kids had their test on Wednesday, so there was already a little bit of disparity, but anyway, I know you have a lot of things to consider, but I just wanted to throw that out there because that seems a little more fair, thank you.
You know, I had to wrap my head around that one too, and it's, the thing was, is it's the same class that's separated in two physically, right? So you're absolutely right, if all kids were there, the second period class would be taking theirs and third period class would be taking theirs the following day, but since we're separating the two cohorts within one class period, that's where that entered in, I hope that makes sense.
Thank you.
And let's go to, I think I saw Thomas Pfaff on here, are you still there?
Yeah, but my question got answered.
Okay. Thank you, Thomas, let's go to Shannon?
Thank you, if there are more students who would like to speak before me, I would love to hear them, I really appreciate them, they're using their voices and excellent logic. Do you see any other students that you can...
There's quite a bit, but go ahead, we will get to the students for sure.
I think I might have figured it out, I, it looks like with the gold week only, students are still taking half their classes, so my daughter is an L, so on B days, on Tuesday, she would be attending periods two through or one through four?
One, two, four, six.
One, two, four, six, okay, so however you split it up. I'm wondering about, if, it seems to me that if we were able to offer periods one through seven each day, I know it reduces the class period, however, on the asynchronous day, the students could be studying, they could be doing their projects, so the actual instruction days, say for instance, A through L goes Tuesday, they have periods, like you said, the even ones, hopefully they would actually come back on Thursday. But both of those days, they would actually be having periods one through seven, all students have one through seven on those days, so that they can see each one of their classes, they have a shortened period on their asynchronous days when they're not there, they would be able to do the instruction, work on the projects, whatever the case may be, again, it just seems like consistency perhaps and motivation that would be important to keep that going, and it seems like that would actually allow for pacing in curriculum to go a little bit faster if you were going through the full day one through seven and not just the odds and evens days. So that was a thought, and I know, again, that the odds and evens have been done for quite some time, but looking at how we're rethinking things, I, you know, it kind of reminds me of an opportunity for a flipped classroom, that the students are in the classroom for the instruction or any remediation, any clarification that might need to happen on their asynchronous days, they are studying up in preparation for their next classes or their fulfilling activities, projects, whatever that might be, but perhaps we can consider that. And then finally, I would advocate strongly for the AL, MZ, AL, MZ, not the MZs back-to-back, because again, that might really throw students off and their momentum.
Thank you.
Shane, I know we have quite a few people lined up, if, one, continue looking for students, but also if we can choose people who have yet to speak, just to give more opportunity to folks, and we've got about, well, we have nineteen minutes, and I do have to wrap this up.
It's tough to figure out who's students here, this is an individual who has not spoke yet. Jen?
I think that was me, so nobody else is speaking, so I'll go anyway. I just wanted to speak to the concern of homework, somebody had mentioned earlier about how they're gonna be online for six, seven hours staring at the screen, are they still going to be expected to go home, well, continue to sit at home, I guess, at that same desk and do more online homework as well?
There will be assignments outside of the class, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Whoops, let's see. Well, looks like we lost Shane. Let me see if I can recover.
I can jump in, Lito, if you need...
Oh yeah, if you could, Jonathan, and just, you know, just pick folks as you see fit.
Cool. Jenna Hall?
Thanks, I'm an English teacher, just so everybody knows where I'm coming from, but what I'm hearing about these, I hear that there's like an expectation from parents that their kids will not be seeing that many students per day, but when we're talking about these gold weeks, that's still 300 kids that are hypothetically on campus at the same time. So when we're thinking about like, just the passing periods, or going to the bathroom, or I don't even know how we'd be thinking about lunch periods yet, it's not like a small tight cohort, it's 300 kids, so I think that we should just be thinking about it like that instead of thinking that our kids are gonna be with a group of 12 and only see 12 kids or so. Thanks.
Thank you.
And Carolyn Cohen?
Hi, so I am a rising senior, for those of you who don't know, and I support what Tiana and Phoebe have said about going to school as much as is possible. And also, I would emphasize attending school on days when we have block schedules instead of on D days, because in my experience throughout high school, the A days and D days are never particularly productive, we don't really have much time in class because there's so much transition, so I feel like whenever we're in school, we should be experiencing productive classes with B days and C days. And also in athletics, I would hope that we would be able to participate in sports such as tennis, you know, singles tennis, and cross-country, and golf, sports that are less focused on, you know, contact and teams. Thank you.
Thanks Carolyn. And Nora Shram?
Hi, I'm Nora Shram, I'm an incoming sophomore at PGHS, I really appreciate all the effort and work that have gone into making these three different schedules. As a sophomore, I am taking multiple advanced classes, that includes French III, and I really, really appreciate the fact that we are still having our honors and our APs classes. I understand that I will not be able to see most of my classmates in person by virtue of the fact that my last name is different than theirs, but I do appreciate the fact that I will be able to go to school as much as possible. I prefer this option red gold 1.0 because it allows some downtime between, between weeks that we're at school and weeks that we're not, and that would help stop any coronavirus or cold or anything going on at that point in time. I would hope that we are able to do some sports like mock trial, which is less of a contact. Oh, okay, well, it's a club, but it's less of a contact thing and more of a individualized sort of thing. I really appreciate everything that you guys are doing for us, thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Nora. Um, let's go to, gosh, I just had it, I'm sorry, you guys, Thomas Pfaff?
All right, okay, hi guys, I'm Thomas, going senior, just a couple questions, so one, what is the plan for like lunches and breaks and that kind of thing? Like, that hasn't really been addressed in the schedule, is it gonna be changed at all, is there anything going on for those? Because in theory, those are the times when there's the most risk of most people getting the disease, because that's when the crowds are merging and stuff.
So for lunchtime, Thomas, there would be the expectation that we would have students outside for the majority of time, weather permitting. If we have to have students inside, then we need to ensure that we're practicing physical distancing, and of course, lining up for food, we need to ensure that we also have physical distancing during that time.
Add on a little bit there, Thomas, I asked Mrs. Lip, our Nutritions Director, the average amount of students who buy, you know, breakfast and lunch, which is sixty at break, so we're looking at about thirty students there, and it's about 120 or so at lunch, so about sixty students there, if we're cutting that in half, and we're certainly working on that and planning how we're gonna achieve that.
Yeah, okay, yeah, I was just curious, awesome. The second, I had another one, okay, yeah, so I definitely agree with Phoebe's point way earlier, which is that I really can't remember that much, so I really like the schedule that's entirely gold weeks, because in my, I really don't remember much from when we had to go entirely digital, like, the learning, when you were digital, the learning was just significantly, you were just less invested. And I, so this is why I'm actually in support of the entirely gold week plan, because the more you're in school, the better the education output in my eyes is going to...
Thank you, Thomas.
And, yeah, I had another point, but I forgot it, so I'm gonna ignore that.
Thanks, bud. Let's try to go back to Stephanie Gometo.
Hey, everybody, I'm with Nora, I'm really appreciative of four schedules put together for us to all review and provide feedback on, thank you for that. Asynchronous versus synchronous, providing those options, I'm curious as to what the thinking was behind providing an either or for the teachers to give throughout the week, that's one question, and then I have another one around these four schedules, they all seem to kind of run the gamut from, you know, having a community that's healthy and being able to have this all gold week versus a community that's kind of heading towards a distance learning model, and I'm wondering what the threshold is of choosing the model that we're going to go into the school year with.
Lito, I think I could take the first part of that. With AB 77 that was passed and then turned into SB 98, part of the language goes in there with instructional minutes, and it talks about teachers' assigned time value. So a teacher that has a class with A through L basically can choose whatever works well for them on that given class period to have it either asynchronous or synchronous. I don't think Mr. Great would mind me using him as an example, I'm pretty sure that most of, if not all of his classes for the M through Z group, as they're sitting at home on their computer or device, would be synchronous insofar as he's generally a lecture-style teacher, where another teacher may be having small group work and maybe going from this group to the next, and it may not just work well for that particular class period to work as a synchronous class, so it may be asynchronous.
I see, okay, that makes good sense.
And after the input survey is completed, 5:00 PM on Friday, myself, Shane, Dr. Porras, and other district administration, we will look at the results and then begin analyzing it and determining what schedule we will put forward. And our goal is to have that information disseminated to the community by July 9th.
So is it based mostly off of public opinion or what's happening in the community as it relates to infections?
We're gonna look at everything, as I believe these four schedules kind of look at everything as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie. Let's go to Katie Selfridge?
Okay, I'm sorry, am I unmuted now, sorry about that?
We can hear you.
Okay, great, thank you. Again, thank you guys so much for having this meeting, I am an English teacher at the high school, and I think many of you know that I would love to see my students back as full-time as possible. And I like the way the gold week is looking right now, the idea of the asynchronous and the synchronous, I'm curious... I'm, I'm curious, and I guess this is more of a question for Jonathan. Um, is there a possibility that I could live stream my classes? So if I have an A to L one day and the M to Z is supposed to be synchronous, can I live stream those classes so that they can have that same similar experience? Um, and then on Thursday, the M to Z is there physically with me and the A to L is having a similar experience so that I can continue moving my classroom forward. Uh, that's the first part of my question. And then I had one more after that, if that's okay.
Yes. Yes. With, yeah, we can, we can, um, set that up, you know, in terms of, of technology wise. Yeah, we can definitely support that.
That's fantastic. Thank you so much, Jonathan. I appreciate that. Um, I feel, what was that? Okay. So sorry. I'm also talking to Travis, who is also a teacher at the high school. He's math. Again, my concern is that, um, if we're only seeing the kids a couple of days a month, one of the major elements of teaching is getting to know the kids and their individual needs. If I only see kids four, five, six days a month, I'm not going to be able to get to know them. I will have a minimum four classes of freshmen next year. Um, and I don't know a lot of those kids. So I want to know, I, I want to, I guess, emphasize that more in-person time will allow me to get to know the kids and their needs a lot better than, um, than digital learning will allow. So I just kind of wanted to throw that out there as another point. That's not a question. It's just something I wanted to say. So thank you again very much for doing this, guys.
You're welcome. Thanks, Katie. Let's go to Shay, Shay Lynn.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
Hey, it's actually Sean's mom. This is Julie. I have, uh, uh, I think most of them have been answered, but I do also want to express my concern about the schedule that divides the groups going the Tuesday, Friday and the Wednesday, Thursday. Want to make sure that that's not driven by extracurricular or, uh, other non-main courses. I'm not, I'm not coming up with the right word right now. Electives.
Yeah. So it's.
And then, um, I also want to say that I really appreciate all the students' opinions. And in the past, I feel like a lot of the communications from the high school have only gone to the parents. And I really want to make sure that the students are involved going forward. And in this case, I know the emails may have gone into the student's school address. And it sounds like from what I understand, and the students can correct me, that maybe the best way to reach all the students now so that they can participate in the survey would be through the high school Instagram account. Because social media is really what they're looking at right now, not their school student email over the summer. And then I'm hoping that going forward, maybe we can collect their phone numbers if they wish, and then they can get all the information and updates from the school using a text blast. And thank you for all your time on this. I really appreciate you letting everyone have input.
Thank you.
Shane, let's go with, uh, hey, two more people and then we're going to have to wrap it up.
Okay. Um, Marla Martin?
Hello. Um, as an educator, I'm feeling really conflicted because I definitely know in person, in my opinion, is the best. Because, um, you know, teachers can take cues from their students. Students can ask questions. They can come in, you know, during breaks after school. And so as an educator, I truly believe that is the best. However, given COVID-19, I am having concerns with, uh, sending my student to school and for our whole community. Cause I just do not want anyone to get sick. Not just my kid, not just me, but all of her friends, everyone. So, um, I know that the students are really motivated to get back to school and get to be with each other. But as a parent, I am very concerned what it's going to look like and how it's going to be. And I don't know how, um, you know, I, I, I posed the question to, um, Mr. Garcia about what if I don't feel comfortable or other parents don't feel comfortable sending their students to school? Is there a way to stream in so that our students who are choosing not to go because of whatever reasons, that they are able to do that and still be, uh, part of a high quality education? Cause I do, I do believe that being in person is the best. However, my child's safety and our community's health is my priority, even over an education. Thank you. I just hadn't heard that. So I wanted to add, um, for those of us who are feeling that way.
I'll give my two cents there really quick and thanks, Marla. Um, for example, if, if your student was M through Z and you know, you chose not to send your student to school, that absolutely, that, that's, your student would be basically with the M through Z cohort, just being at home and getting the same thing that the A through L group would be getting at the same time. You know what I mean? If that makes sense? So the, the beauty of the gold schedule, for example, is that there's a built-in formula insofar as students who cannot be at school, that, that's okay. You know? We'll, we'll be able to achieve that. Let's put it that way. Okay. And one more, and I, I apologize, but a lot of folks on this list have already spoke. So I'm really trying to get people who have not. So there's a Galaxy A 50 with no name that I know has not spoke yet.
Hi, my name is Fonda. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello? Can you, you can hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. My daughter goes to school there. Um, she would be home alone during the day because parents are out of the home working. What is the accountability for students actually participating? Is someone making sure that they are online with the class the whole time when they're at home in front of the computer? And then if they fall behind grade-wise, what is the grading system going to be?
So we will be monitoring, um, student, um, work outside or part, I should say, participation outside of the school. Um, and we will be submitting, um, on a weekly basis, essentially an attendance log as to what student activity was or was not. And as far as, um, students who may, um, begin to struggle academically, we will be working with counselors, with parents, with students, uh, very quickly to ensure that we can get those students back on track.
Okay. My just, my concern is because she's going to have to be responsible for herself during the day to a big degree. And I, I don't know that if she gets frustrated that she would go commit to that and go through with it. So that's my concern. If she falls behind, is, you know, what is going to be in place for those students? And is the grading system going back to what it was before all of this happened? Or is it just a pass fail situation?
Oh, sorry. I, I did miss that last part regarding the, the grading system. So we will have, uh, our normal grading system during the closure of schools across California. As, as we all know, uh, we went, uh, the majority of camp, uh, districts and schools went to a hold harmless. However, uh, when school starts up, uh, we will resume back to our normal grading policies, uh, across the campus. And communication, communication, communication. It's going to be very important that, uh, staff, teachers, counselors, administration, um, are, uh, getting the information out to students and parents about how their student is doing, whether they're achieving at the top level or if there are some struggles. And, and so that is something that I will, uh, always stress, uh, the importance of ensuring that everybody understands where each of our students stand week in and week out. With that.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
You're welcome. With that, I just want to, um, talk about our next steps and then, uh, Dr. Porras will make, be making some closing comments. So as a reminder, um, yesterday, I sent out and through the catapult system, um, the input, uh, survey. And it went to parent and guardian emails. It, it went to student emails. And, uh, thank you for the.
Emails. PGUSD blocks all emails that aren't, um, that aren't PGUSD. None of the students got these emails.
Okay. So I'll follow up on that. Um, I did, um, look at the survey prior to coming in and, and there was about 35 students who had responded. And some had used their, um, school issued email. So that is something, um, that we will follow up on for sure. And if need be, we'll, we'll resend it out to students. The input form will stay open till 5:00 PM, uh, July 3rd. And, uh, as I mentioned earlier, we will, uh, be working as a school site and with district administration next week. And our goal is to, um, put out information regarding what schedule we will go forward with by July 9th. With that, Dr. Porras.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia. And thank you, everyone, for attending this evening. I know sometimes an hour and a half goes by like a blink of an eye. And, um, there's probably lots of questions out there still, lots of comments to be made. And I want to encourage everyone to please do take the survey. And, uh, if you, if you feel that you would like, certainly you can also send an email. You can send it to, um, either the, uh, high school staff or to myself. If you feel that you need to do that aside from the survey, we, we do review those, um, as well. Uh, and I do want to clarify that we do have a board meeting coming up at this point scheduled for, um, July 18th. And, um, our hope is to, um, bring to the board, our recommendation from this decision-making, what we would like to see or what we believe is the best choice for the, um, high school program. Uh, and will be added to the remainder of the recommendations that, um, have already been brought to the board as well. And, uh, excuse me, I meant to say, um, uh, July 16, not 18, forgive me. And, um, so I would, um, uh, encourage all of you to please check with the website. Often on the main page, on the very far, uh, right-hand side of the banner, you'll see a reopening plans tab. We keep adding to that and keep, um, uh, renewing those documents to the extent that we can. So we're trying to update all of our plans there, um, and they're available for you to see. Also want to remind you that, um, we are constantly in tune with all of the superintendents in the county as well as in tune with our county health director and are receiving, um, assistance through advocates that are working, legislative advocates that are working, um, with the state level and the California Department of Public Health. So we're getting a lot of information. Lots of things keep changing on us. Um, we're trying to, uh, get the news out as quickly as we can. So, um, just kind of be alert on that. If something substantial gets changed, I will certainly send out a special email to all families as well. And, um, so thank you very much for the time that, that you've put into this evening. And, um, I'm hoping that we're going to be able to call this information and get a great choice out for you. One last thing I do want to mention, I, I had on my notes here, there were a number of questions regarding, which students wish to choose or not choose distance learning. Um, I do want to note in the governor's, um, when you passed SB 98, which is now education code, uh, there is a stipulation there in regards to, um, who may or may not choose full distance learning. That was sent out in an update that I gave to all families. Um, I want to know, I want you to know that that, those parameters are set by the governor, not by us. And, um, we are expecting a little more clarity in the language that he put out, hopefully mid next week. At this point, um, it is noted that for families who, um, have medical conditions or are medically at risk, are the families that are eligible, students that are eligible. However, again, um, please stay tuned. We're watching that carefully because we know that's an important factor in all of this. So, um, thank you again to, uh, Mr. Steinback and to Mr. Garcia for hosting this this evening. And, um, we're doing the very best we can behalf of your children and we'll continue to do so. Also thank you for the board members that are, uh, listening in this evening. I know that will be helpful in the conversation that we have coming up on 16th. Thank you all very much.
Have a good evening, everybody.